Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting with Greenville City Council. Thank you for being here. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Gibson, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Bow your heads. To God, thank you for this day. Thank you for the health of all the people here and their loved ones. Thank you for allowing us to come together. Lord, give us as members of this council the wisdom to listen, to reason, to make good decisions, fair decisions, just decisions about what should happen in this city and what should happen with our resources. Give us the ability to form consensus whenever we can to strive towards that. And when we're not able to agree, to be able to act civilly and to move forward and to progress on other issues. Give those who are going to speak to us tonight the ability to speak particularly and eloquently. Give them the understanding to be kind. Give all of us the ability to prosper in your eyes and for our families and our friends. This I ask your Lord in your name. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance. With the flag. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lilian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brazington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of August 9th, 2021, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections, questions. Seeing none, we shall proceed to the next item. We have a few folks who signed up to speak to us. We thank you for calling in to the clerk's office to make those arrangements. We have a three-minute rule, so please watch the three-minute clock. We're glad to have you with us. And when you're speaking, you may take off your mask. So that's a good part of it, too. With that, Mr. Jack Logan. Thank you, Jack. You're always glad to have you with us. Usually, we're glad to have you with us. Well, you never know, you know?
Don't put me out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. You know, it's real.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Jack Logan. I left y'all a two-page, and I would like for y'all to look over that. And upon my request, I'm asking you, your discretion, to call Slay It In and the Federal FBI for a criminal investigation into the police department and as well as the city manager. I'm going to move on. All right, with that being said, the latest incidents in the city, and it's going to continue, was this past Saturday, I do believe, when those teenagers used their BB gun to shoot up businesses and automobiles. Then prior to that, we had the case that Mr. Russell is very concerned about with the lady who got hit, a drunk driver. Then we continue backwards and we go, well, a lot of y'all don't know about the beat down on Main Street. I call it a beat down. Then the cyclist down there was very sad on Mother's Day morning. All of that goes back to structure within the police department. All of that goes back to that. I've spoke to y'all about that before, and if someone's going to lead and direct, directly be in charge, that person should know how to structure. And that person, anytime you have a person that's, if the city manager is going to be the one who hire and fire the police chief, he should know or she should know something about law enforcement. And apparently, this city manager do not. But with this being said, this, what y'all have is criminal. It occurred right here before the Public Safety Board, and I'm asking y'all to look at it. And that's, if I had not requested those videos, they would not have ever seen those videos and nor would no one else. He was not going to ask the police chief to make them public. But again, all I can do is ask you, because God sit high, he looked down on all of us. And I was glad to hear the Supreme Court ruling that now if a person is found innocent, that that prosecution must show, send them the evidence they used to prosecute that case. The case with Timothy Balkin would have gotten sent, and it would have been a laughingstock. But again, it was criminal what they done, and it's negligence by every person who has been killed in the city of Greenville. I've never, you know me, man. I've never had to come down. I've always come down and bragged on the places. This is the first time. That's because nothing, not so bad against Chief Thompson, but this man here don't know how to lead the police department, tell the chief something is wrong. But I thank you for your time and pray for peace in the city of Greenville.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Bob Lloyd. And do you state your address for the record, too, by the way?
Bob Lloyd, resident 14 Pinney Street, president of Hampton Pinney Neighborhood Association. I was able to attend your last meeting when you deliberated and amended the pending ordinance on neighborhood planning meetings. Tonight, I want to express support for the notice requirements that you adopted. However, I'd also like to urge you to consider two other text changes. These might seem minor, however, I suggest they can help assure that such meetings meet their intended consultative purpose. First, please add language that lets the reader know that attendance by city staff may be requested so that an authoritative voice about what is actually required is present. The current ordinance is silent on that subject. And the fact that Hampton Pinney requested and received such attendance from Jay Graham and previously from Michael Kersky and all the way back to Gene Poole meant that multiple meetings did not degenerate into argument or confrontation. Not every neighborhood has been lucky enough to have the kinds of zoning experiences that we've had in Hampton Pinney and might not know how important it is to have somebody present who actually knows what they're talking about. Also, please add language that states that the applicant's report on the meeting, once filed with the staff, is available for public inspection. Before leaving off, I'd like to express on behalf of my neighborhood appreciation for the expeditious manner in which the staff has crafted and squired through multiple text amendments to protect existing single-family neighborhoods. Taken together, they represent near-term solutions to many things that have ailed the development process here in Greenville. I want to particularly express thanks to the staff for responsiveness to the recommendation made in a memorandum submitted to you on April 22nd that urges stronger requirements related to vehicular traffic impact. That memorandum is based on extensive experience that Hampton Pinney has had with major and sometimes controversial planning and zoning decisions. I'd also like to revisit one recommendations contained there and to urge further council action. Please, please, extend the coverage of the very robust downtown design guidelines to the footprint of the downtown master plan. The master plan includes all or portion of six close-in residential neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods often confront downtown development challenges without full downtown protections. This alignment would add a layer of protection for them beyond the neighborhood-friendly provisions that you recently enacted. It would assure a belt and suspenders, as my lawyer friends sometimes use the phrase. And if you like, it could very well help plug any problematic loopholes that might still be out there.
Thank you.
Bob, your recommendation was they may be, they may be requested to attend or they are required to attend?
No, it's, it may, they may request. What I'm, what I'm getting at is the idea that when somebody reads the ordinance, they wouldn't know based on the fact that that possibility exists.
Thank you. And what was the second one? I'm sorry?
That the staff report, once it's filed with the staff, excuse me, the applicant's report, once it's filed with the staff, could be available for public inspection.
After the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the recommendation, the other one has been around a long time. I think we're working on it. What we do is to expand the D, the Design Review Board District to that area.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Mr. Lloyd. He's been really helpful during this whole text amendment process from someone who is, you know, learning all of this stuff as I go. To have someone who can put it to real life is very, very helpful.
I'll lend it to you about a day. But he, he knows he lives in the right district, so don't get carried away. He can come over and visit you a day. That's it.
All true.
That's right.
Next is Kate Devaux.
Hi. Oh, hi. Oh, yeah, hi.
Councilmen and councilwomen, my name is Kathleen or Kate DeVix, and I live at 10 Darton Way, Greenville, 29607. I wanted to say a few words to you today about the neighborhood meeting ordinance. First, I wanted to say to the Planning Commission as well as to the city council, thank you for the amendments that have been proposed thus far and that are before you on second and final meeting today. As the gentleman before me said, they're very, very important. They're important because they reflect the city's desire to protect the character of existing family, single-family neighborhoods and the quality of life for neighborhood residents. And they also reflect the city's decision to amend the current LMO to better protect neighborhoods from the impacts associated with concentrated development, including issues related to construction noise, impact, lighting, traffic, design, height, massing and form, and neighborhood character. And there, I'm just quoting from the language in the cover sheet for all our amendments. But I think it's important to keep before us what you're trying to do. But I also want to, in addition to encouraging you to yes vote and pass those amendments today, I want to encourage the Planning Commission to review at a later date, but a not-too-distant date, to review again the neighborhood meeting ordinance because there are some things there that this gentleman just mentioned and one that I want to mention to you. The current approach to the timing of a neighborhood meeting, and Mr. Brazington, I have to say to you first, Mr. Brazington and I had a wonderful conversation. He explained a lot to me. This is a point I haven't discussed with him yet, but it remained of concern to me after our discussion. So the current approach to the timing of a neighborhood meeting requires only that the neighborhood meeting be held at least eight days before the public hearing on an application for development. This gives me two reasons for concern. When, when neighborhoods do not get any information about what is in the works, they will resist it. This was written about in a 2007 Harvard study on how to defeat neighborhood resistance to multifamily housing. Because with no information, we have misperceptions, we have fears, and we have a lack of trust. So to have only eight days before the public hearing when a neighborhood finally receives information is not a good situation. It's not good for the developer. My second concern is it really doesn't provide a meaningful opportunity for that meeting to bear any fruit. Because if you wait that long to file the application and then right on the heel of it, there's the neighborhood meeting, the, the public hearing, then in that space of time, which could occupy months and months, the developer, the applicant could have had made obligations, incurred expenses. There may be agreements that go back and forth. There may be reliance. If I were on the developer's side and I came into a neighborhood meeting and I knew that my public hearing was eight days away, any changes or modifications that I might make would be very minimal. Because really, the work has already been done. The plans are in place. How can that meeting accomplish anything? So I just suggest that you look again at that eight-day requirement. And during the next months, while we're still revising the LMO, that you give that some thought. I also shared with Mr. Brazington some neighborhood meeting requirements from other parts of the cities, the forms and the requirements on content, et cetera, that they use. They may be helpful to you. I said you would pass them along. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. You gave us so many good points. I'll let you continue. I appreciate it. That's okay. Mr. David Gerhardt, South Carolina Governor and School of the Arts. Thank you for being with us.
David Gerhardt, 15 University Circle. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Wings of the City exhibit. The popularity of the exhibit has resulted in significant economic impact in the downtown, even in the time of the pandemic. The response to the sculptures from residents and visitors has been very positive. In one week, I was in the park nine times, seeing diverse communities, take photos with the art, and have constructive discourse. Greenville's fortunate to be the first city east of the Mississippi River to host this unique exhibit. The Arts and Public Places Commission is currently planning to purchase one of the Wings sculptures as a permanent addition or attraction to the downtown in Falls Park. That's a good decision. These sculptures are successful and follow a longstanding tradition. The sculptures follow thousands of years of figurative sculptural traditions. An early example is the bronze sculpture known as the Boxer from ancient Greece, 329 BCE. Artists in the Renaissance and the Baroque and Mannerist art movements about 600 years ago were commissioned by cities and churches to make similar bronze sculptures that showed Bible stories, to similarly make us think of life, death, and spiritual existence. The works in front of the Peace Center and in the park evoke thoughts of existence and are made to uplift us. We see idealized figures with male musculature, with wings, have some masks. Some are balancing, embracing, looking. Marin's work evokes angels. Man was made in God's image is a line that comes to mind. These sculptures are successful in their portrayal of a perfected body, much like that of an athlete at the Olympics. Negative space and balance are used to give a sense of awe. I'm especially a fan of the crouching figure near the Liberty Bridge that has an open head and engages the eyes when you can see through it. What a great visual example of empathy to see through his eyes. Their content, the sculpture's content, is relevant to our city, which has many cultures and has had much progress in the last few decades. It's important that our city continues to collect artists and artworks from diverse cultures and backgrounds to be inclusive of the diverse populations who live here. Thank you for having this space for us to share our free speech. I value multiple ideas and beliefs to be present in the community meetings, and I value this free speech in our public artworks.
Thank you very much. We've had all kinds of interpretations of what the art is about. Not, not presented as opinion, but presented as fact that it's that particular way. And I think we had a meeting a while back where somebody said they were worship, devil worshippers of an Aztec god.
Marin speaks directly to his intention, if you search "not too deeply."
And it doesn't seem to go there at all.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think it's probably appropriate here to recognize representatives from the Hispanic Alliance, Adela Mendoza, and I see several board members back there, but thank you for being here.
Do you stand? Do you want to stand? Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Glad to have you with us. Suzanne Wolf?
My name is Suzanne Wolf, and I live at 200 Perry Avenue. I'm here today to say thank you to you, Mayor White, and the entire city council for delaying your vote on Z13 2020, the rezone for the Mosaic project during the July 12th meeting. Per your recommendation, the West End residents have done the following. Created a special committee of eight neighbors to focus on our issues with the development. Had, held several meetings to fine-tune the issues and our recommendations. Presented our five areas of impact to the West End Neighborhood Association and received unanimous support from the member residents, attendees. Scheduled a meeting with the Saint Capital LLC/Mosaic team. At the meeting held on August 19th, the special committee presented our five areas of focus to the Mosaic team, and we had an opportunity for discussion and Q and A. We also produced a 25-page document summarizing our impact areas, listing questions, offering possible solutions, and included reference materials. Copies were given to all attendings, including city staff. I do have a one-page summary that I'm happy to share with city council, as well as the 25 pages, if you really want to read them.
You got my, you got our attention on that one.
The Mosaic team had agreed to meet, to meet with us again after they've had time to review and digest the material provided. As you can see, the residents of the West End are committed to working with the Mosaic team, and the hopes that agreed-upon solution can be found. So again, on behalf of the West End Neighborhood, the special committee and the West End residents, I want to say thank you for encouraging us to engage with the Mosaic team and the opportunity for a satisfactory outcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We should thank Suzanne for, she's put a lot of time into this. Very appreciative of that and staff that was there.
I actually would like to see the 25-page document.
We'll, we'll have all of it, yeah.
Give it to Camilla and she'll copy it for us.
Yeah, yeah. I assume, I guess this, you said the staff has it, so I guess we'll get it. But thank you very much for making a reappearance and giving, giving us an update. We really appreciate that.
Yeah, I attended the meeting and I only saw the five things on one page. 25 pages, I must have left early.
Yeah, Lois Swordway? Thank you for being there.
Lois Swordway, and I live at 213 Perry Avenue in the West End. I'm here tonight because I only recently realized that I owe you a thank you. Public art and the right for artistic expression have been cherished freedoms here and around the world for hundreds, if not thousands, of years. I am thankful in the face of such controversy for Greenville's commitment to Wings of the City in showing an artist of color's work and in doing so, supporting Hispanic groups here in town. I hope we can all be mindful of those who would experience pain and suffering if this art were not permitted or indeed if any future installations were censored. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming down with that message. We appreciate it. Okay, thank you. That's the folks who signed up to speak this night. We have a couple of special presentations. Mr. Manager, do you want to introduce the first one? Do you, who is?
We have Dr. Brennan Traxler here tonight from DEHEC to give us an update on COVID and to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, I'm sorry. Dr. Traxler, you're welcome back. I mean, I thought you would be on video. I didn't know you were live. Okay. Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you. And you can remove your mask here, at least up there. Okay.
If you would like.
If you would like.
I will take it off for these, for these few minutes for remarks. And, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for having me. I'm sorry that I have to be back here again on this topic, but I appreciate you having me. Today, we announced data from over the weekend from cases and test results that were reported from Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Those daily case counts for those three days were 4,602, 5,011, and 3,540. That is statewide. Brings our total case count to date for the state to 695,489. As you can see from this slide here, from the state's EPI curve of daily cases, we are in our third surge that we're following, the ones from a little bit earlier in last summer and then from, of course, this past winter. the ones from a little bit earlier in last summer, and then from, of course, this past winter. Going to the next slide, the weekly case rates for about the last nine weeks have continuously increased statewide, as evidenced by this graph. You can see that the different color lines here are showing different age groups who have tested positive. You see that top line, the orange one, is the young adults and has been in the lead going back to the beginning of the summer. The gray line that's representing the middle-aged and the yellow line representing the elderly are tracking and continuing to track in parallel. We are seeing that those three age groups' curves are slowing in their rate of increase slightly, but they are still not coming close to plateauing, much less decreasing. In addition, you will see that that blue line, which represents the pediatric patients, so those 17 and younger, has changed the shape of its curve, really in the last roughly two weeks, is increasing a little more quickly than the other ages. Going to the next graph, which is showing Greenville County alone, there were 83,571 cases total to date reported in Greenville County. Again, this is showing those same four age groups. You can see that the county's graph is showing a steady linear increases in all four case rates for all four age groups, which shows that really sustained, ongoing transmission is occurring, again, in each age group. While we continue to see that the case counts, hospitalizations, and now unfortunately even deaths are increasing, again, we are seeing a very slow increase in the vaccination rate among eligible people statewide. But, sorry, 55.3% of eligible South Carolinians, which are those 12 years and older, are vaccinated with at least one dose, and even less, 46.6% have completed their vaccination series. Greenville is doing slightly better. Again, this is showing by age group, this slide is, the vaccinations in South Carolina. And I don't have a graph by age group for Greenville County, but I can tell you that the county is doing slightly better than the statewide average, or overall percentage, I should say. 57.9% of eligible Greenvilleians have received at least one dose, and 49.5% of eligible Greenvilleians have completed their vaccination series. And if you have not heard, the Food and Drug Administration, the FDA, granted full approval today for the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine for those aged 16 years and older. I hope that this was, that these results of this lengthy, extensive review of the data by the FDA will reassure more Greenvilleians and more South Carolinians that these vaccines are safe and effective, so that they will go and get vaccinated. I encourage all eligible people to get vaccinated, to get fully vaccinated. And I encourage everyone, two years and up, when you're older, or sorry, two years and older, when you're indoors and around other people, please wear a mask also. Let's end this pandemic once and for all. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Sure, we'll have some comments and questions from council.
I have a question. The, when I look at these charts, this is very disturbing, first of all, but when you look at that first chart of the number of new cases, if my calculations are right, it looks like 1,000 out of about 1,700 cases are under age 35, compared to 700 under, over age 35 of cases. Is that right?
And you're seeing, you're looking at the case.
So I'm adding the blue and the red, and then I'm adding the gray and the, and the yellow. So, so the, the rate.
Sure.
Our problem is with those under 35, our significant problem is under those 35. The other chart, it looks like a couple past that. It looks like the vaccination rate of those under 35 is about a third of what it is for those over 35. Is that a correct?
Correct.
Semi-correct assessment?
We are seeing more cases and fewer vaccinations in younger folks.
So the bottom line is the issue, if we want to get over this thing, the issue is a focus on those under age 35, including our children. And, and the second, that was just a statement. And the, the second question is, and it may not be fair to ask, but at what point do you say to us as a council, guys, you've got to do something? I mean, is, is there a level that just makes you crazy and makes you tell us that we have to react? Or are we past that time? Are we past that part of the curve?
I'm past that, so I, I don't know where, he's, he's coming up on the river. Honey, I've, I've been past it for the last two weeks.
More than a level, it's a trend. It's trends that disturb me, sir.
Yeah, I'm with you, Russ. It's, it's just very disturbing.
I mean, terrifying.
Given the trend that we're in, is that a trend that disturbs you to the point that makes you feel like we need to do something?
I think it's a trend that makes me think that every person in this state needs to do something, and in this country, and in this world, yes, sir.
And I know you're reluctant, because we are an elected body, to, to tell us what we should do, and I'm certainly not asking you to do that. I'm just asking for your opinion, as an expert in this area. Do you believe it will be helpful for us as a city council to do something as far as even a limited mask mandate or something along those lines, to try to stem this trend that we're in?
Speaking strictly from a public health standpoint, we know that masks and vaccines work. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Dr. Traxler, thanks for being here. See if I can properly articulate this question. This is a question I found myself in conversation with, with folks over the past couple of weeks, but... So notwithstanding the push for vaccination, which I hear you say, and I've read about, there's been a slight uptick recently, that's encouraging. And hopefully, the 55% that have one shot will ultimately get a second shot. But my question is, in the, in the medical professional community, as scary, sad, and tragic as it is that some are still getting infected by COVID, and particularly at increasing rates, those who are unvaccinated? And when you look at the, I mean, pretty eye-popping daily numbers statewide, I mean, 5,000, 4,000, 3,000? You've got, you've got 46% that is receiving a substantial protection via vaccination. You've got 54% who are not, and the unvaccinated are getting infected at a disproportionate rate. Is anybody able to somewhat forecast or predict, as sad and scary and unfortunate as these trends are, at what approximate point we would reach this long-sought-after, often-referenced herd immunity? Right? You've got close to 50% who are vaccinated, but at clips of 4,000 to 5,000 a day, people are unfortunately having to build their own immunity through fighting this disease. What, what does that look like from a forecast?
It is very difficult to do. I would say pretty, pretty close to very, very difficult, if not near impossible.
Is anybody attempting it?
Certainly, there are groups out there attempting it. Part of the, part of the problem, the biggest part, though, is that we don't have the data. No one does nationally or even internationally to know, for example, beyond 90 days, there's not enough data to confirm whether somebody still has immunity from that natural infection beyond that point. We don't know how long those people are infected. We know from studies that the vaccines are providing higher levels of protection than natural immunity, but quantifying all of that can be very challenging. In addition, we don't know, we can't predict necessarily how fast the virus will mutate and will develop other variants, whether those mutations will be in key parts of the virus that are important for the vaccine to work effectively. Those pieces of information. This virus doesn't play by any rules, sir.
I know it's a tough question, and probably no easy answer. I think I've read, maybe others, 70 or 75% is a huge herd immunity target over the course of this pandemic. But you're right, I mean, other than vaccinations or public health considerations or herd immunity, at some point, this thing has to turn the page, right? And we're all eager for it, but, but I've wondered, what are the ways and what is the approximate timeframe? If anybody's able to track that, we can get there. So thanks for fielding the question.
Councilman DeWort.
Yeah. There we go. Dr. Traxler, thank you so much for being here. I know you all are working overtime, and your whole staff is working overtime. So thanks for all that, that you're doing. Forgive these questions of me, please, because as I often say to my council members, I do not have a healthcare background, so, and all I know is what I read and what I hear, and I try to, try to really get through this information. And now I've got an expert right in front of this body. So, so thank you for, for entertaining me. Did I hear you say that studies show that vaccinations are more helpful versus natural, getting the, the virus nat? I'm stumbling through this, help me with that. Vaccines are more?
They, there is data to show that they likely cause a more robust immune response. If you have someone who has actually had infection before, and then gets vaccinated also, those are the folks who really see the most robust immune response.
Good, that's me. Sorry. So, and then, thank you.
You can, you can send in the bill.
Let me ask you this question that is always, I'm wondering about. Because we talk about the 46% of the people have gotten their first shot, and 55% have gotten their second shot in South Carolina. Roughly, I'm sorry, I'm sure I screwed up.
Flip-flop, but yes, sir.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, you're right, that would be flip-flop. So let me ask you this. Have you all done data on the number of people who have been vaccinated and also coupled that with the people who've had the virus? And what number that comes out to? Sorry, who have had the virus and not vaccinated, and what that comes out to?
We have not, sir, because, as I was explaining to Councilman Brazington, we don't know how long that immunity for sure lasts. So we don't know whether to count back, you know, two months or six months in terms of calculating based on the people that have had the infection.
Sure, okay, thank you for that. The, the other interesting, I'd love to get your thoughts on this. And again, this is coming from someone who has no healthcare knowledge whatsoever, even of my own health. So I have also read studies that, long-term, there are some folks who believe that this pandemic, with enough, enough people who will end up getting the virus, and enough people who will also get vaccinated, that instead of a herd immunity, that, that the pandemic could actually evolve over time into an endemic. Would you mind speaking on that?
Certainly. That is a possibility, and I think the longer we go without reaching the, that triggered, you know, herd immunity, that magical number that we all very much want to reach, that becomes more likely of a possibility. However, when you see endemic things, we usually are not seeing them in the numbers that we're seeing now, and that's what we're trying to avoid, is if it becomes something endemic, akin to a flu or whatnot, where we're not seeing double digits, number of people in the state die every day. We don't see that with flu. We don't see that with other.
We have a long way to go, if that is the case.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. You may not be able to answer these, Dr. Traxler, but I'm going to give them a try, and then I have a statement. Do you have any feel for where we are in capacity at our two major healthcare providers, Prisma and Bon Secours?
I do not believe that I have those. Specifically, I have statewide data, I believe, looking, certainly at least in terms of number of COVID patients. I can tell you has been increasing. I'm looking at the last week's numbers, has increased every single day. The number in the ICU has, with the exception of two days, has increased every day per week. And the number of ventilated patients, people on ventilators, breathing for them with COVID-19, has, one day it has dropped, otherwise, the other six, it has increased across the state.
And I guess this question is for the city manager, and just to confirm, we have now implemented a mask ordinance for all city facilities, including the one we're in right now, correct?
I would call it a policy, Councilwoman, not an ordinance.
Yeah, not an ordinance, apologies, bad word. Okay. With all due respect to those who are not, who are not showing any respect or regard for that policy, you know, there are no words for me. I mean, we know there are people in the room right now who are unvaccinated, as self-proclaimed, choosing not to wear a mask, and I take great exception to that. Great exception to that. And I think if that is our policy, it all gets down to enforcement of policy. You know, this is a friendly place, and we're all here to protect each other. I thank all of my council members for being vaccinated. We're leading by example. And for those who are willing to be here and be present and not conform to what our, our policies are for our facilities, shame on you. Thank you.
Any other questions? It's, it's still a fact, is it not, that I think in the ICU, something like 90-plus percent of people in the ICU are unvaccinated? Have you seen those numbers?
We looked at the data from the month of July, which is the most recent analysis of that, that I have seen. We were, I believe, at around 88% of our cases statewide were unvaccinated, and high 70s, 80% who were in the ICU and of deaths who were unvaccinated.
Number I got came from a recent Prisma Health.
Yes, sir, mine are statewide, I apologize.
Right, yeah. Okay. We'll probably be hearing from you again, as well as our doctors from Prisma Health and Bon Secours. We're very interested in bringing them back as well. Thank you.
Thanks for the critically important work you do, Dr. Traxler.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Dave.
You too.
Well, something very different. Carrie Murphy here with Artisphere, okay? Glad to have you with us. How long ago was Artisphere? It seems like it was a long time ago.
It feels like just yesterday. No, it was May. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen. I'm Carrie Murphy with Artisphere. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you briefly tonight. I'm here because we actually announced the results of our festival back May, so almost now four months ago, and I believe we can show a video. Thank you. I appreciate that. I know you have a lot of business to get to, so I'm just going to add a little bit of context to some of those highlights. I'm basically here to say thank you for your continued support for the city, for the city's special events team. They are amazing partners. We would not be able to pull it off without them. They are professionals in every manner, and, and it's just been amazing. But when we were putting this together, you know, the first vaccine, as we all know, was distributed in December, and our board made the very brave decision in January to move forward with the festival in May. We did consider perhaps moving forward with the festival in August, but nobody wants to be outside at an art festival in August in South Carolina. So we were, in submitting our application to the Department of Commerce, they had a formula for how many folks we could have out on the street based on your, your attendance, or your acreage. And they had decided that that was going to be 2,000 for us at any one point in time. So we needed to decide how we were going to keep, keep just 2,000 people on the street at any one point in time. And we figured we would break the weekend down into 10 shifts of two and a half hours. So that meant we had a total capacity of 20,000, and we sold out. And I have to tell you that, you know, an event that is not accustomed to selling tickets, trying to contemplate selling 20,000 tickets was, it kept me and the board up at night, frankly. It really did. But a funny story there, too. We had signage that had a QR code that sent you directly to our ticket buying page that we had to fold up and put inside festival headquarters and on-the-fly make signage saying "Sold Out." We were very successful. So the artists, they're, they were well aware that we would have a smaller capacity, only a fraction of our regular attendance, about a third, or in perhaps in some years, even just a fourth of our attendance. But they were on board and ready to come to Artisphere, knowing even a smaller crowd in Greenville had great potential, and they were right. 104 artists representing 28. And they were right, a hundred and four artists representing twenty-eight different states recorded the highest average artist sales in the history of the festival at eleven thousand sixty dollars per artist. That's one point one five million total artist sales for the weekend. And speaking of millions, after conferring with our partners at Clemson's Real Economic Analysis Laboratory, we had an estimated economic impact on the community of two point one million. Now, we're very anxious to get back to our regular footprint and programming in 2020, but in this very difficult year, the city of Greenville should be very proud of having pulled off something special that people are still talking about. I have a colleague at another top ten arts festival in Cherry Creek, just outside of Denver, Colorado, not after, not too long after Artisphere, she contacted me and said, "What did y'all do? What did y'all do?" And congratulations, because the artists cannot stop talking about Artisphere. Now, we were one of the very first festivals after a fifteen-month hiatus, but nonetheless, I hope that everyone that played a part, the volunteers, the city, you folks, the special events team, our staff, the police, fire department, parks and ground, our board, our sponsors, our donors, our donors and all our guests feel a sense of pride of what our community came together to do in the face of adversity. Hopefully, you all received your press release, there's some more details there. But I hope everyone here shares our sense of pride, and congratulations. Congratulations, folks with the city's special events team, you guys make our job easy. Thank you.
We, we do share the pride, and thank you for everything you've brought to it, Artisphere, and it's always a joy for the, for the city of Greenville, our event staff and everyone to be a part of it every year. And it was a glimpse of sunlight after a long winter, so everyone appreciated that.
Well, thank you.
That's a great report, outstanding, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds very poetic.
Was, well, shit, it's arts, we got a lot of arts going on tonight, this is arts meeting, who would have thought? Okay, thank you very much, Planning Commission appointment, Councilmember Dow.
That is me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor White, this is an appointment I'm especially excited to make. I'd like to make an appointment, I don't think she's here tonight. Ms. Pam Adams, appointing her to fill an unexpired term, this is the term that was vacated by Ms. Chantavia, Chantavia, I just never, Johnson, my apologies, who just did such a great job, and we're sorry to see her go. Pam brings great wealth of experience, she'll be fulfilling an unexpired term which would end April thirtieth, 2023. She is a veteran of the U.S. Navy Reserve, has received multiple commendations to that effect. She has also her bachelor's of science degree from the Art Institute of Pittsburgh. She has worked for the Greenville Hospital System and Facilities Development, she's highly qualified, a great servant to the community, as some may remember, her service for the relocation of the McLaren Medical Shelter, and currently serves on the Community Remembrance Board. So, Pam Adams for the Planning Commission.
As, as well as moving from Arts and Public Places Commission.
Yes, correct, yes, she currently is on the Art and Public Places Commission, and we're appointing her to the Planning Commission.
Okay, Ms. Adams is so-named, any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Ms. Adams' appointment, say aye.
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 Opposed, aye, she is so-named. Consent agenda.
Mr. Prue.
Second.
Do you have a second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brayzington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Regular agenda, fourteen A.
An ordinance to amend section nineteen dash two point two point four of Neighborhood Meetings and nineteen dash two point two point seven, Preparation of Staff Reports of the Code of Ordinances to update the Neighborhood Meeting Standards and Requirements for Public Hearing Applications.
Motion, second, any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to bring forward a couple of different amendments for further revision to this particular item. If I may, I'd like to read each of them verbatim for the record and for consideration. So, do we, do we have the text up here, Shannon, full ordinance?
No, sir, we don't have it in the presentation, but we can pull it up.
No, that's no, that's no problem, council's reviewed it thoroughly, I'm sure. You may recall, and I can just provide you a reminder of this, there's a sub numbering within the ordinance number three that describes conduct of meetings and describes typically what the applicant will need to do to be in, to be conforming with our requirements. I'd like to propose for consideration an amendment that says the following at the end of that subset number three. The summary report filed by the applicant becomes part of the application record and may be obtained by interested parties upon receipt by the city staff, which in and of itself, the effect being that applicant summary is available to any individual that may request it subsequent to the neighborhood meeting. So, that's one proposed amendment, and I'll need some procedural help, shall we do them separately, I think?
Yeah, let's do them separately. That's your amendment?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion on that amendment, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
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 Thank you, sir, I'm pleased as counsel. I'd like to propose a second amendment, this actually follows that subset in number four, which speaks to attendance, and it goes on for a couple of sentences, but I would propose the following wording as a new sentence at the end. It would state, "Any party involved in a neighborhood meeting shall have the ability to request staff attendance." And no, Bob Lloyd did not exactly write that, but it sounds very similar.
What a coincidence.
Therein lies the proposed text amendment.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Second.
But I, I have a. Councilman, the way you worded that, it just says we may request it.
It's an, it's an opportunity.
But it doesn't mean they have to do it.
Great. We don't, if we boxed in to have staff at every meeting, that would create a lot of meetings.
Okay.
So, so the intent would be to serve the purpose for all those who scour our ordinances, to, to know that that opportunity is there, and then upon request, knowing our staff like we know our staff, we think there's heightened odds that that type of support and representation could occur, but without somebody knowing to request it, as Mr. Lloyd pointed out, you might just think those are the breaks.
Okay.
Shannon didn't have enough hours.
Yeah, I'd be required, if we, I'd be concerned if we required it. I don't think the five additional planning staff members that we've included in our budget would cover that.
Because to me, I, just a little.
We need a first and second, first and.
We had a second.
We had, yeah, we're in discussion.
A little blind the ointment, but I'm going the way council wants to go, and y'all just may pull me back, and that's okay. To me, to me, it's, it's, all you're doing is, is, and this is not a criticism, I feel like we're just being redundant, that we already can request it. And so now we're just making it into an ordinance in the language that we can request it. I'd love to see a little more teeth in that without putting the burden on the staff, this.
Yes, they may request it, but everybody doesn't know that. We have a whole lot of people, if they had known, it would have helped them in their deliberations a long time ago, because they would learn some information, because the staff could have provided for them. But a lot of people, now, our neighborhood association, they know because they spend so much time doing it. For new people who are moving in, they don't understand that. And so, it makes sense to have it in the order so they can read it.
I'd like a little more teeth, but I'm for it.
Do we know it?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, okay. Did you have a third?
I'll stop at two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, I have a couple of questions, please. I went back to my eighth grade geometry, which was a real challenge for me. When you go from five hundred feet to seven fifty or a thousand, I'll use a thousand because I was able to calculate it. When you go from five hundred to a thousand distance, it doesn't double the number of households, it almost is five times as many households that you're asking.
This is an SAT question, right? And ACT.
A train is going to Chicago.
Nope, it's exactly this diameter question.
So, so the, when we're voting to extend the boundaries, it's not just we're extending the boundaries by another fifty percent, we're extending it by whatever, two or three times. So, my question is, how many, how many permits in the last year would have been affected by this? And of those projects, how many would you consider to be, and I'm asking you for a value judgment, how many would you consider to be high visibility, potential problem permits? And then I have a third question.
Okay, thank you, good evening, councilmembers. On the high visibility, a lot of what we do now is high visible. So, I would say at least twenty percent of our projects would be, would be considered highly visible. Between the, the items that we take every month to the Design Review Board, Planning Commission, and to a lesser extent, but sometimes the Board of Zoning Appeals, at least one or two each month are going to garner some type of attention. In terms of your other question, you know, we did study the, what the distance requirements at five hundred, seven hundred fifty, and thousand feet would mean, and we looked at five recent projects. And we found that if you increase from five hundred to seven fifty, it, the, the delta is about two times more in terms of the notice requirements, and one thousand was, on the average, about two point seven five, so close to three times. And so, we did look at that. We did also look at the number of applications that would be affected with it, and it was, and we looked at, and this is mostly affecting, going to be changing for multifamily that had not been included prior to. And thus far, we've received, outside of the C four this year, five multifamily project applications that have been heard by Planning Commission. So, that's kind of just the impact of this year, of what it would have, what it would have, you know, affected. Now, and I want to make sure that this is clear, too, this is all related to neighborhood meeting requirements. This is not changing anything with public hearing requirements. And if, of course, if council wanted staff to do that, we would absolutely bring forth that. But this is all in terms of the neighborhood meeting requirements. Michael, if we could go to the presentation, I wanted to show city council a, a flow chart that our planning team put together to kind of talk about this process. And, and I know it's a little hard to see on the slide, but as you can see, you know, they worked hard to put together a graphical depiction of how our process works. And currently, you can see when you have to do the neighborhood meeting requirement, the notice, as you amended it at your last meeting, would be ten calendar days prior to the meeting, in terms of the notice. And the meeting currently must be held eight days prior to the public hearing. And so, this flow chart is something that we would like to add to our website, kind of explain to the public the process of how that works. But the, the changes before you this evening reflect the neighborhood meeting requirements, and if we wanted to look at other requirements, we're happy to bring that forward to you in the future. I will say, I'm really proud of the planning team and the work that we've done to bring sixteen text amendments over the last several months. And, you know, I, I can't say enough thank you to our team for what they've done to help make that happen.
Shannon, the only thing I'd say on this graphic, and I think, I don't know if I emailed you this morning about it, if it was one of those, but you got to look at these through the lens of the, just the average person that doesn't do this day in, day out, like we do, like staff does. You know, neighborhood meeting, public hearing, not everybody, you know, under public hearing, I would certainly list PC, DRB, that, you know, what is a public hearing, what are they? And with, in terms of the radius, or let's say the diameter, I would rather over-inform than under-inform, because to miss Kate's point earlier, when people feel uninformed, or under-informed, or worst case, misinformed, that's when anxiety rises. And I recognize that expanding from five hundred to a thousand means more stamps for the developers, you know, for lack of a better term. But I think if people receive that notice, they can make, they'll see the address that's on the table for discussion, and they'll make their individual choice of whether or not to attend the neighborhood meeting. You know, we definitely need to monitor as we get, you know, as we get into the LMO rewrite. But like I said, I think, I think we've heard a resonating message across all of Greenville and, and multiple neighborhoods, that five hundred isn't enough, and I'd rather go big at this point and see where it gets us.
But our ordinance, the proposed ordinance is seven fifty, correct?
No, sir, it was, it was amended at a thousand, and when you look at the pocket and you go back and review the minutes from your last meeting, it was, it was approved at one thousand.
My other, my other question is, currently, does the planning director or planning department, not the Planning Commission, do they have the power to take special exception? And if there's a really visible project, say, we need to take it to whatever, fifteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred? Does the planning director have that power?
No, sir, we do not, because that is, that would mean us having to decide, you know, is this a, a project that requires more than another project? And that's not an area that we normally try to delve into, because we think all projects are, are important. And so, it doesn't allow for that currently. Now, there is a provision within the ordinance, Councilmember Stahl, that allows the Design Review Board or the Chairman of the Planning Commission to require, and let me read this directly for you. A neighborhood meeting can be required if the chairperson of the Planning Commission, Design Review Board, or Board of Zoning Appeals requests on during a public hearing. Or the administrator may require a neighborhood meeting for development prior to a public hearing only if at least one property owner that directly abuts the subject property requests one, requests one, or at least twenty percent of the owners within five hundred feet of the subject property requests one.
But isn't, isn't it true, I mean, we're talking requirements, but isn't it common practice that planning director or planning staff, upon recognizing the significance of a certain project, will strongly encourage?
Yes, sir, we strongly encourage and recommend a neighborhood meeting for any application that requires a public hearing.
And you, I mean, the batting average there is pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second, we had amendments to the original proposal, so we're ready now to vote on the ordinance, is that right? Clerk, have you already, am I correct?
Yes, sir, we have the ordinance as amended, we had two amendments, so this would be the call for that, for approval. Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brayzington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
All righty, fourteen A receives the second and final. New Business, fifteen A, first reading.
An ordinance to annex approximately zero point five three six acre of real property located at Gladys Drive.
Does that move?
Second.
Motion, second. Jay, you want to say a word about this?
Yeah, I was just going to thank you, Mr. Mayor, point out that this is a request related to the Woods Crossing PD that was approved in January of 2020. And that apartment complex has approximately three hundred and forty units, I think somebody asked that question last time we talked about this. And part of that, you can see here on the slide in front of you, is a portion of the roadway that the PD approval actually required on-street parking. And so, this road is in, currently in the county, and the city is asking to annex that in so that the city can then work with that PD reform.
That's, that's in an enclave, right, or not? Is that a donut hole? Is the property a donut hole?
It was.
It, it, yeah, there you go, there you go, let's, yeah, let's look at this again, I saw it last time, and I can't even remember where it was.
Yeah, this, the green, the area highlighted in green is the PD. And then the area that we would like to annex is on the western side of that PD along Gladys Drive.
Love the halt, yeah.
And then, Jay, does that give us, well, I guess we'd have it anyway, contiguous to?
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's still a lot of all-around Congee Road, there's still a lot of in the county, outside the, outside the city, in the city, outside.
What's the condition of that road right now?
I believe, Clint, Clint, do you have an idea of the condition of the road there?
Essentially, in pretty good condition, the county resurfaced it about three years ago.
I'll take it.
That's a great question, glad you asked that.
A clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brayzington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Fifteen C, I mean B.
An ordinance to rezone approximately thirteen point nine seven acres of real property located at North Pleasantburg Drive, Skyview Drive, and Winterberry Court from C three to OD.
Does that move?
Motion, second, okay, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Mayor, members of council, this is a request by Greenville. Mayor, Members of Council, this is a request by Greenville Technical Community College. They're working to consolidate their campus, and they feel that an OD zoning designation would be more appropriate for their use, and staff does support that. Planning Commission recommends adoption.
Questions?
Do they own that property?
They do.
And lease it out?
They do.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to enter into a developer's agreement between Merrill Gardens and Greenville LLC and the City of Greenville for public improvements.
Motion second, please.
So moved.
Motion second. Clint, you got any more to say about this? We heard from you last time.
Yes, sir, Mayor, Members of Council, y'all have seen this project a couple of times now, but this is our, for the Merrill Gardens Development. We are entering into an agreement with them to implement a storm drain upgrade across their site. This is an upgrade that's been in our plans for quite a while. It's part of our Red Street Drainage Basin, and it's, it's this one cross-line pipe under Academy Street is a major constriction within the storm system here. So this is an opportune time to get this upgrade done while they're under construction, and we've been fortunate to kind of work out the details of that agreement. So happy to answer any questions.
So I have a couple of questions.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, sorry.
You do?
It's not a big deal, these are very minimal, just a learning experience.
Okay.
A learning experience. So I, my bad, and I interpreted this as CIP money when I first saw it, and it's storm order, CIP money.
Correct.
Storm order, okay, so the word storm order on the CIP would go in front of that. All right, Clint, you know what's coming. There is a section in here that it kind of puts the hook on us, that this amount we're obligating, that if we find something in terms of rock excavation, hazardous material removal, anything like that on the site, it's on us, it's not covered in this number that we're appropriating. We did soil samples, because I remember the consultant, or maybe it was Paul Dow talking about that. Do you have any feel for risk on this one, highly unlikely based on our soil samples, that we do have that uh-oh?
Yes, ma'am, so that language is pretty common with construction contracts like this. We did do some subsurface exploration work on the site, specifically in the area where we have the bore under Academy Street, where we're getting a little deeper than the storm drain across the parking lot area. We did discover some rock, didn't, didn't discover any sort of unsuitable materials or hazardous materials, so we were happy about that. We did discover some rock on both the Salvation Army side and on the Merrill Gardens side. We did some more kind of exploratory, kind of excavation in that area. We actually adjusted our design to, in attempt to avoid that rock. We think the risk is minimum, but there, there's always potential we could discover more rock as we get into the construction.
Okay, but there, all that due diligence gives me a lot more confidence, I just wanted to check on that. All right, thank you, thank you. That's it.
Yep, okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15D?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 36, Article 5 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for the issuance of picketing permits and to provide for the prohibition of the open carry of firearms during pickets and other permitted events on public property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor White?
Aye. 15D?
An ordinance to authorize acquisition of land consisting of approximately 0.54 acre property located between Perry Avenue and Branwood Street, and to appropriate 1.15 million, 1,150,000 in the parking fund for property acquisition and construction of new parking in the Village of West Greenville.
Your motion, please.
Does that move?
Motion second, any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure how I'm, I guess I'm asking this to you, Eden, but thinking about our history of arrangements like this, did we have, and we talked about this a little bit in the work session, we did not have an arrangement like this with Poe West.
Correct, I've confirmed, we did not.
And my, my personal take is, in looking at the numbers, I'm uncomfortable with the amount we're paying. I also believe in a lot of circumstances, it's better, well, something like this, where the property is owned by the current residents, that it is their responsibility to develop their own private parking instead of us developing that private parking for them and buying their property. So that, that's where my disconnect is coming with this project. And I wonder, and this isn't a question, but I, I wonder if there's a way we can continue with the deal, have them maintain ownership, and then we can help them with the paving costs and developing the parking lot. Just a statement, I don't require a response.
I'll ask you this, did, were there any discussions held with the property owner, and were they willing to do anything other than sell it to us, I guess is?
No, the property owners all would like to sell these properties. There are three structures that are owned, and it's six parcels, but two of the houses sit on two parcels each. So in those cases, those are vacant, none of these have tenants in them, and no one is living in any of these structures. So all of the, the current owners wanted to sell these properties.
There are some properties, though, of all these parcels aren't, isn't there at least?
We're not acquiring those.
Okay. Who, who owns those?
So, Michael, can you pull up the slides? Slide two has the listing of the current ownership structure. We had initially contemplated purchasing what is outlined here in purple. However, that property owner was not interested in selling. The two in gray are currently owner occupied. We did not have any conversations about acquiring those, nor did we have any conversations about acquiring the two in gray that front Branwood Street, and those are both rentals.
And then behind, where Poe West is, that was a private property, a private developer, developer paid for his or her own parking.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, only the yellow.
I think the difference is when the other, Poe West was built, it came with parking, the whole parcel had parking already there. We've discussed this many times, but I, I think this is very reminiscent of, in the olden days, when we bought property that became Parking Lot 200 on the first block of Main Street, part of the parking deck in that first block, we bought the property that Richmond Street Garage now stands on, used to be a, used to be a parking lot, we had to buy all those properties, a parcel together. All these things are necessary if you want an urban area to develop in the right way, you got to provide the parking.
It is worth noting, as I mentioned earlier, that the current space that a lot of people park at when they go at 1242 Pendleton, it does have an active building permit, that has 38 spaces, and we would be replacing 48 if council would like to acquire these properties.
My concern?
Is that wrong, do those not add up? What do all the yellow add up to?
850,000.
Okay.
Maybe my eyes have gone bad.
But how much was paid for? That, that was the question. The other, it's just, we keep saying that we got to replace the property that's going away, et cetera, but if we buy it today and the property is going away in two or three weeks, what are we going to do? What else do we have to expend to make this so that somebody can park on it?
So, Michael, would you go to slide five, please? Thank you. Here's the breakdown. The, the main difference from what we had previously looked at was that we had estimated the construction cost around 270,000, and we also had included that purple parcel as a potential acquisition. We're not acquiring the purple parcel, and at this point, we have increased that estimated construction cost to 300,000, including demolition. We do believe because of the demolition that would be required, it will take us three months to have this available as additional parking.
What, and what would be the total cost per space? Did you?
I do, it's 23,000 and change, and I didn't write it down.
Per surface parking?
Yes, ma'am.
And again, the slide says that's pretty comparable to South Main Lot, if I'm not mistaken.
It is less than what was paid for the South Main Lot.
It's also not on South Main.
Do we have?
True.
Please.
But it's still.
Do we have the opportunity, do we have the space, in that space, should the village develop as we think it will, do we have the opportunity to build up?
Absolutely.
Parking if we need it.
Absolutely, the air rights are included in this contemplated transaction.
Well, my concern with the whole thing is that we're tearing down, possibly there were lots for single-family houses in West Greenville. And then there's two other houses, I'm just saying, it's just, it's a lot of money. I'm just concerned about the acquisition cost, and I just think that 48 spaces are, I don't know, I, I guess I just can't get with it. Somehow it has, has bothered me in the approach.
I have a, I have a question, and it's, I guess, more addressing Councilwoman, oh my gosh.
Fleming?
Fleming.
You've got two choices, that's all right, that's all right.
It's that COVID thing, man.
And it is.
Thank you so much.
And, and Mayor, whatever his last name is. I wonder, did we face these type of debates and questions years and years ago with Main Street and around Main Street?
Yes.
We did, we did. I mean, you, when you have.
Sometimes we had to walk up and down, it was one of them, I know, we had, we met, I know, six months on this one thing, because it just didn't seem right at the time. And I guess that's where I am at this particular, yes, for ye is all we've ever done. This is not easy, you know, when you're taking somebody else's property. But then, I guess what has bothered me is that the land was purchased just to sell it to us.
No, ma'am, the land hasn't been purchased.
Maybe I'm wrong about that, but I'm just saying, it's like, these, nobody ever tried to develop anything in there for the neighborhood. It just, this is buy it up, sell it to them, they'll bat.
So for what it's worth, I remain supportive and unchanged in my position, I mean, recognizing the voice concerns, but what's driven me are these two things, we need parking, and I've asked time and again for alternate options and other plans, and I haven't seen any, so it doesn't make this more palatable, it just makes it a viable option. And then frankly, the other thing that occurs to me is, the City of Greenville, picket three, five, 10 years ago, we could have pursued these parcels or other parcels to obtain, what does that say, 48 spaces, 58, 108? But we didn't, as others pursued it, for whatever they elected ultimately to do, and I mean, that's just the way it goes. So, you know, I, I don't want to look back two years, or four years, or six years from now and say, man, we missed a real opportunity to solve a real parking problem that's growing.
Well, also, the certainty of good development in this area, I mean, this is not, they, I just feel like these folks have almost earned it, there's so many people now who are doing good things in that area, and this is very traditional of what the City of Greenville does, to move the ball forward in an urban setting, providing the parking. The return on the investments is going to be huge, and if we don't do it, it's going to be a problem, we're going to be looking at it in a couple of years from now, what do we do about parking in the West End, in the West Village? It's a great piece of property, I think we're lucky, especially the site itself being directly behind the development, that's, that's sort of traditional one-on-one, and what we did downtown over and over again, we always tried to get the site behind where the development was happening. You can go down and look at where our parking garages are, every one of those used to be just a, you know, an old gas station, or an old parking lot, or something like that, but we bought it, and we thought we paid dearly for it, but we reaped great reward 10, 5, 10, 20 years later. All righty, let's have a vote, ordinance. Clerk, clerk, call the roll, 15E.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Gibson?
No.
Councilmember Brazington?
Yes.
Councilmember Stahl?
No.
Councilmember Dow?
No.
Mayor White?
Yeah, aye, yai, yai. It is not, not approved. 16, no visits there, staff reports, 17A, who is taking care of? I'll take that, Mayor. That, okay. Council probably remember back, it's probably been well over a year, when we gave you an update on some new technology that would be going in around the city, particularly in the commercial areas, I know there are a lot of concerns expressed by neighborhoods. We have, I think, now received permit applications for several hundred of these 5G small cell devices, recognizing there was a concern, both by the public, as well as to protect our frontline employees that have to work around these devices. We hired Matt Butcher, who's here tonight from Sublight Engineering, he's going to share a few thoughts with you, and talk a little bit about some of the training that we have ongoing for our Public Works employees. Matt?
Thank you very much, good evening, and pleasure to meet all of you tonight. Today, I did some measurements at some of the small cell, and we'll go into that. A little background, I'm a licensed engineer in Virginia, where my office is, and also in South Carolina. Oh, sorry, bye. I'm just going to go through these pretty quickly, just kind of an overview of what wireless is, a little bit about 5G, some about the exposure, what the research and regulations and limits are, a little bit about independent review, who has looked at this besides just the FCC and others, and some examples of what, what this means. Over half of adults now have only wireless telephony, it's even more so with families with children, 65% of families with children only have wireless phones. Emergency 911 calls, the vast majority are done over, over wireless telephony. And, and business, you know, 2019 mobile banking became the most popular access option. So wireless is, is really kind of everywhere, and it needs some infrastructure to work. So what is it? Wireless is radio signals that travel through space, just like light, part of the electromagnetic spectrum includes radio waves, microwaves, infrared, ultraviolet, X-rays. And the power, one of the key things is that the power from radio signals diminishes with distance, every time you double the distance, the, the amount of power goes down by a factor of four, it's called the inverse square law, from, from your old physics class, somewhere along the line. The electromagnetic spectrum, again, goes from down in the frequencies that, that we use for lights and electricity, about 60 hertz, really low in frequency, up through the radio, AM, and FM, and TV, and those are similar frequencies to what we're using for wireless, up through light. At frequencies above light, the energy, just because of the frequency, becomes what's called non-ionizing, and that, and at that part of the spectrum, we have X-rays and gamma rays, which can cause cumulative effects. The frequencies at light and below have heating effects, kind of immediate effects, but don't, don't, aren't known to cause cumulative effects. The, there's always a question about 5G. It's the latest, greatest, newest thing. Since the 1980s, we've been going from 1G to 2G to 3G to LTE, which is 4G and 5G. They, they've both changed in how the radio waves are used, and which frequencies or additional frequencies have been allocated to them. The big concern or question about 5G is in millimeter waves, or these microwaves, very, very high frequencies. Greenville has installations with these, these frequencies, they're used for going enormous amounts of data to phones or to, to users in the, in the immediate vicinity. The millimeter waves don't go very far, that's why the nodes have to be small and close together. They also don't penetrate things like leaves, or buildings, or skin. So generally, the effect of millimeter waves is considered less in, in actual human exposure conditions. A little bit about signals and exposure, one of the weird things that happens is, is you get further and further away from a cell site, or an area that isn't well-served, the number of bars on your phone goes down, and the number of, the amount of power your phone transmits goes up. So the most exposure anybody gets is from the phone next to their head, that's that inverse square law, again, that, that even though it's low power. That's that inverse square law again, that even though it's low power, because it's so close to you, that's generally the most exposure anybody gets. And if you're worried about exposure, it's kind of the best thing that can happen to you is somebody build a base station right next to you, because then your, your phone turns its power way down, because it doesn't need much to go very far. Go on ahead. There's been research into electromagnetic and, and biology and human exposure since really the 19th century. In the 20s, they used diathermy, basically to try to heat patients as a, as a treatment. In the 50s, the US Navy was observed people being harmed by radar, being very close to very high-powered radar systems, and they started doing extensive research and set limits for exposure. In the 60s, that was set. It's been looked at quite extensively over the past 40, 50 years. Low frequency from power lines, as well as radio frequency, once cellular telephony became popular. It was a big topic, a lot of research has gone into it. The limits that are, have been well-adopted, that are used almost throughout the world, the FCC limits are very similar to those that are adopted in Europe, and in most of the world, are based on partial or whole-body heating. So one-degree temperature rise in a person, or disruption of food motivating learning in animals. In other words, that was the testing that was done, and, and what's, what's has driven the current exposure limits. They looked at all sorts of research, including cancer, and any other effects they can come up with, but these are the ones that set the limits at the lowest level, and that's what, what, what the basis is. The, this is my fancy slide, so go ahead and hit it a couple more times. Congress mandated the FCC to, to set the exposure limits under the National Environmental Protection Act. They take input from EPA, OSHA, NIH, and FDA. They're very similar to the Ichnerp limits, they're mostly used in Europe, and the current ones recommended by the IEEE. There's been some small changes in those exposure limits, but they, the FCCs are substantially the same. And the World Health Organization has looked at this many, many times, and is actually working on setting their own set of limits, which are gonna be very similar to the other ones. The exposure limits are two different levels. There's a, an amount of exposure that was determined to cause harm, and they set a safety factor of 10, and that's for workers. So workers that are around antennas may only be exposed to levels that are 10 times less than what's known to cause a problem. And a worker is defined as somebody that knows they're being exposed, knows it's an antenna, and can control their exposure, not work there. The, they're based on time and spatial averaging, and exposure to a part of your body is actually, can be higher than your whole body, because if your whole body is exposed, it can't get rid of the heat. And another fancy slide. Okay, so go ahead and hit it. The hand-wrist partial-body exposure is, is pretty high, the, the amount of energy you're allowed to hit. The whole-body exposure, which is what most things are assessed for, and what I assessed the installations at the, in Greenville today are, are quite a bit lower. When you buy a cellphone, it's assessed at these higher levels, but the, the, the levels that I measured were based on this. Peak measured on the ground and kind of around cellphones are typically about 1,000 times less than that limit. So that means it has a safety factor of about 50,000 times. And that's, that's the, that's my thing on exposure limits, sorry. The American Cancer Society, the World Health Organizations, many, many, many entities have reviewed this. The IEEE keeps, keeps a list of those. I have some on my website. If you really want to dig into this, there's a lot of information. The FCC's site is good, they're the ones that are mandated by Congress to, to manage this, and the NIH has a good informational website about cancer and radio frequency in cellphone. Areas around antennas that may exceed the exposure limits, these limits that I talked about are up by the antenna. So if you have a macro site, you have to get 150 feet in the air to be in an area which might exceed these exposure limits. For small cells, and these actually are modeled on exactly what is done, has been used in Greenville, those areas are still at the top of these 30-foot or so towers.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you here for a sec.
Sure.
So you're telling me, in the small cells, there is still some exposure issues?
If you can get up and right next to the antenna, so.
Don't climb.
I'm away from.
Well, what's the, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm being self-serving again, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't blame you.
Because I got one that's going right outside my kid's bedroom window. So what is, what's the radius?
So I was up next to eight different cell, these small cell installations. The, the distance to the, where they were exceeded by measurement today, from the antennas, was about a foot.
A what?
One foot.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the computer modeling actually is conservative, more conservative than what actually happens, and that might extend to eight or 10 feet. But.
And just so I'm clear, that's eight to 10 feet, that's a level that exceeds?
Within eight or 10 feet of the antenna, it may exceed. And again, may because the, when you do a computer modeling, you're using a lot of very conservative estimations. So you'd have to, again, be in that area for a long period of time, but as I, as I said, when I measured them today, you'd actually have to be about a foot to actually exceed those limits.
And I know there are variables that affect this, but on average, how far away do I need to be in order to not be exposed at all?
Well, you could go to Antarctica. I mean, there's RF everywhere. We've been living with.
You're at higher risk because you're tall.
Exactly.
Right.
That's what I'm worried about.
Russell, you're okay.
Okay, you need a helmet.
That doesn't spade a lot, though.
You need a helmet.
I, I mean, we've had.
Nothing to worry about.
We've had AM broadcast in this country for 100 years now. So a, a radio tower that's built on the side of town, and people have built houses around it for 100 years now, and people have been living next to these, you know, again, slightly different frequency, but same radio exposure. There's not been a, you know, any sort of long-term effect that's determined by that, or, or, or that's been shown by that. The same thing with, with the frequencies being used by the cellular industry. Those, there's not been any, any consensus review that says this is causing a problem at levels below exposure limits. And that's many, many entities, not only in the US, but in Europe, and all over the world.
I did not mean to go down this rabbit trail, so I'm so sorry, but some of us live in neighborhoods where these things are within.
Yes.
15, 20 feet of a house. Because we got a lot of houses that are right up on the curb.
Yes.
Well, closer than that, where we just gave permission to close the road to the Duke Power Station there, there used to be 12 houses there, there, and all of those people didn't leave because they wanted to. Well, since I live up the street, all 12 of them had some form of illness over the years, but like I'm saying, that was the whole power station.
So what, what recourse do we have, and this is a question maybe no one has any idea, other than our utility, what recourse do we have potentially if you got a house that's 12 feet, 15 feet from the road, and you're like, you know, I'm just not good with this? What, so what kind of recourse do people have? Might be a question for later, John McDonough, but anyway.
Yeah. The resource would be with the FCC.
A year ago.
Yeah.
Concerned about 5G.
I'm, I'm sorry.
And it's more, you know, what are we doing to make sure that, because it's a, you know, the FCC governs this, what are we doing to make sure that they are in compliance?
Yes.
And this is your verification?
Exactly. So, so I kind of spot-checked a, a number of installations today. I most often work for the, the wireless operators. They ask me to make sure that they are within compliance, because they're mandated by their federal communications license to, to ensure that they are in compliance. So it, it's very, I mean, all of the wireless operators do this to different levels of complexity, but, but they, they do look at that, especially with the, these small cells when they're in relatively close proximity. And I spend most of my time reviewing installations like that, to make sure that they, they are not exceeding, they don't have a, a way that they could exceed exposure limits in adjacent Again, this is the eight nodes that I went through, and I'm just gonna rapid-fire, just drop through. These are just results, kind of, the first one in front of City Hall, I measured on the ground with one instrument, which is a, a very coarse instrument. It indicated 0.6% of the general public exposure limit. The, my more sensitive instrument, which really can, can, can provide actual, good data down there, indicated 0.1% or less of the general public exposure limit. Within 20 centimeters, about eight inches of the antenna, that's kind of a magic number in RF exposure, it only measured 17% of the occupational, which is less than the general public exposure limit. Again, and that's right next to the antenna. And if, if you look at this graph along the bottom, actually, the, the 17% is on the, on the left side, the times that it measured 17% were these, these huge spikes, the vast majority of the time, even 20 centimeters from the antenna, it was way below the exposure limit. And that's the nature of the way it works. When somebody wants to download a file on their cellphone, it bumps up the power as it's transmitting that, and then it goes back down. And then, we'll just drop, again, this is just data that I collected today. The second node was off the air. Go ahead. The third node had a maximum of 50%. Again, this is only 20 centimeters from the antenna, so a worker could be there all day without any issue at that level. Next slide. The next one actually was five times the occupational limit, right there next to the antenna. In, in this case, in, well, a worker shouldn't be there, and they shouldn't be there, if you, if you remember back to where I modeled it, that was, the, the area that I would, I, measuring there, is predicted to exceed the exposure limit. It does, it's, it's all good. At the light that's just below it, the maximum exposure there was one-half of 1%. So a worker could be there without any issue all day. The next one, again, similar, twice the exposure limit, right next to the antenna, but down at the bottom of the antenna, the max is 1% of the exposure limit, again, almost 100 times below. The next one, again, twice the exposure limit, right at it, down below 0.3%. And, again, a little over the limit, and 0.1% down right below the antenna. And the last one was a much smaller, the radios in it are, were, were smaller than the other ones, the max was 37% of the occupational limit, so relatively low. Last slide, the, the RF exposure levels change substantially over time, the limits are averaged, so these peak levels are, are really conservative. Levels below the top of the antenna are very low, and ground levels are very, very low, on the order of 1,000 times below the limits. So I hope I haven't bored you too much, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you.
All right, Matt. Thank you. Appreciate it. So I, I think the point of this is the general public should feel pretty good about the program that we have, the testing that we've done. Unless you're climbing, John, right on top of the antenna, and a couple places here, you should be okay.
No, I think you need to go, I think you need to go up to his house and check it out.
Don't matter, hat, he's a climbing tower. Any other, any other management?
A couple other things, Mayor, real quick. I would like to ask Mr. Pitts to give us a quick update on the status of the Bowwater and City Hall agreements.
Mayor and Council, just by way of an update, we're, with respect to the Bowwater Building, we're still in negotiations with the seller. This is a complex, commercial real estate transaction, it's got a number of moving parts, so there's no surprise that it's taken a little bit of time. Not unexpected at all, we're making good progress, and I'm optimistic that we'll have something by the next council meeting for y'all to approve formally, although the timing is somewhat dependent upon the seller. But we're, we're going back and forth, we're making good progress, but it's not quite a done deal. And it won't be a done deal till y'all approve it, of course.
So good, good progress on that, thanks, Mike. A couple reminders, for those of you that had it on your calendar for last week, we, we had to postpone the Augusta Street Safety Meeting. It will be held tomorrow night. A meeting is set for 5:30 at Westminster Presbyterian, I think we're scheduled for about an hour for that meeting. And I would also like to invite.
Will you make sure to send us notice of that, John? I don't think we got notice of that, did we?
Yes.
We did?
I'm giving you a notice right now, you're welcome to come tomorrow night at 5:30.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For an update.
Picture.
And we do have a big event coming up on September the 2nd. We don't have a meeting between now and then, a council meeting. Y'all will get an invite if you haven't already gotten it, that's on the Economic Development brand launch. That's gonna be at about 8 o'clock to 8:45. The doors will open at 7:30, and that will be at Greenville 1 Center at 2 West Washington Street, and we will send you out a reminder on that.
When is, when is that?
Thursday the 2nd, September the 2nd.
Oh, September, yeah.
Yes, and that's all I have, thank you.
Next week, sweetie.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you, Council. You can turn.